Father, you sent your son, Jesus, you came. Dear Lord, give to us your spirit, that we would be in your presence, and we would experience your will, your love, fanning to flame the gift of faith in each one of us, that we would have the life you inspire for us. Teach us about the framework of a life well-lived before you, and allow us the joy that comes from being yours. In your name we pray. Amen. So, last time we were here, or we stopped at the fifth commandment, I believe. And so if you want to open your Bibles, sorry, anybody have Bible? There are Bibles back there. There are a bunch of Bibles back there. They're really good ones, too. Just kidding. So you're supposed to ask me, Pastor, give me an example of a bad Bible. I don't, I, I don't have one. Although I am curious about the rhyming Bible. I'm not sure how true that is to the original text, and how that would pass muster at the seminary, but the rhyming Bible, yes? It sounds like a kindergarten teacher thing, doesn't it? Praise God. The rhyming Bible, that's awesome. So, I want to take us back. We, 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 we have, we have laid groundwork for the foundation of a loving relationship. That Almighty God loves you so much that He was willing to send His Son to die for you. Jesus loves you so much that He was willing to come. Jesus came and lived His life from conception all the way through the rest of His life to this day today as 100% man. This so happens that He is also 100% God. And He lived His life to fulfill the law for you. Lived His life without sin for you, for me. Died a death that our sins deserve, rose again from the dead. Now, now, he who did all of that for you is with you. He will never leave you, never forsake you, but He is present and on your side. And above and beyond that, He locates Himself in very specific places for you in order to be with you, for you to experience it and you to know it. And so, out of this framework of a loving relationship with Him, with Him locating Himself in very specific places, but then also for Him being with you all along your way every day, He gives you a framework for your life, so that you would live your life loved by Him, love Him back, let Him define who you are in your own hearthead, and you would have a heart that is transformed for the sake of loving Him, for the sake of loving yourself and letting yourself up, and for the sake of loving your neighbor. Loving your neighbor. And in that framework, He gives us the 10 commandments that He says, "Love the Lord your God. No other gods, nothing or no one more important to you." If you want to be right in this loving relationship that I give you with me, let me be king of your mountain. And, and I will bless you, guard you, protect you, lead you, give you peace and the joy of a lifetime. That's what I want for you. And the law comes to us in order to give to us this framework, so that when we live like this, we are blessed like this, so that then He can show us our sin and our need for our Savior, so that He can then show us in depth of meaning our Savior. So that then, we have a guide all of our lives for how it is that men of God and women of God live before their king. And so this framework of these uses of the law out of this loving relationship is what we've been trying to get into your head, into your heart, and into the framework of your life, so that you would know theologically, so that you would know the good Lutheran theologians that you are, so that you would know, so that you would know how to meet the challenge of doing life today in the midst of the world in which we live today. And so, we began to look at this idea of the first table of the law, one-on-one between you and Him, no other gods. There's power in the name. And on the Sabbath day, I have set it aside to locate myself with you in a mountaintop experience along your way in order for me to love on you, for you to love me back, and then for me to send you rejoicing, renewed, refreshed into the week before you. And I go with you out there, too. So first table of the law, you and me, you and me. Then, commandment number four, we talked about last week. The second table of the law, the idea of, okay, now that He has talked to us about in this loving framework of how it is that we do life together with Him, how do we, how does He think about, and how do we then think about life together in the world today? And it begins with a very sacred institution, marriage and family. We talked about how Satan tries to attack those two institutions in order to bring the framework of the country, the culture, and the world to its knees. Because if he can ruin and redefine marriage and family, he's got us right where he wants us, and we are defeated. So then, so then we began to look at authority. We began to look at family. We began to look at everything from police to... We didn't say a lot about presidents, but we, because frankly, I don't want to talk about it. How's that? And, and so today then, today then, we started to go on to this idea of fifth commandment. And I have struggled all week with how I want to do this. The goal is to get through these 6G parts in the summertime. And, and we could spend weeks on the fifth commandment in the culture and the country and the world today that's gone so far astray. So, are you there? Are you, are you at Ephesians chapter 6? Have I stalled long enough for you to get there? In that, in that fourth commandment, in that fourth commandment, I would just remind us, Ephesians 6 verse 1 through, through 4. Would somebody read that? Amen. Thank you. First commandment with a promise, right? Fourth commandment, that it may go well with you. What's he mean by that? If you will honor your mother and your father, and Luther would also say, "Those in authority over you." If you will honor and obey them, he says, "It will go well with you and you will enjoy." What, what's he talking about? How can he make that plain? What is the reality that he's after for you to realize? Notice how quiet it is? I'm pretty comfortable. I can sit here. Kurt, you don't need to raise your hand, brother. Huh. Nothing more wonderful than family. Would you agree with that? Yeah? Has, has your family ever tested that theory? Now, I'm a third son. I was 10 years old, and my mother and my father, I had no idea what they were thinking. I don't think they were. But when I was 10 years old, they had another one. What in the world? Everything was going great. I was the baby of the family, getting my way. And then, Lord, and she, and she, and she was with me. Paula and I would go on a date, and she was right there. There are pictures of her in between us. Like, how you, how dare you do this to my love life, Mom and Dad? I think they did it on purpose, though. And so, family is intense, and family is a mess, and family is emotional. But still, curse point, it's a wonderful, it's a wonderful thing. And when it is, it is God's design and God's blessing, He, He wants it in the midst of all of the mess, in the midst of the struggle, in the midst of the sin and the grace, in the midst of the need for repentance and forgiveness, in the midst of it all, family is a wonderful thing. It is God's idea. And so, the same thing, marriage and family together. So he says, "The first commandment with the promise that it may go well with you." So, the idea then that the word of God also says to us, "God puts the lonely in..." Family. God puts the lonely in families. The idea that you would be isolated and alone. The idea that, that you would be blessed in the community, in the communion, in the deep fellowship that comes from being brothers and sisters and family together is God's design for us. And then it says, "And you may enjoy, you may enjoy long life on the earth." Enjoy long life on the earth. That is his heart for you. Can you hear it? Can you see it? He doesn't say, "Honor your mother and your father," because I don't want you, I don't want you disobeying, and I want you under my thumb. And I've given them the responsibility to keep you in line. It's just the opposite of that. What I'm trying to get you to understand is that God wants to bless you because He loves you. And He knows that if you and your family will honor Him and honor one another, out of that comes harmony, cooperation instead of competition, cooperation instead of combat. So, then, then we come, then we come to the fifth commandment. In, before we dive in then, before we dive into that, I want to see it. I want to see it again in Math, in the Sermon on the Mount in Matthew. So go to Matthew. Matthew chapter 5, 21, and 22. Matthew chapter 5 verses 21 and 22. We've looked at this before, right? You've heard the pattern that goes throughout this section of the Sermon on the Mount. You've heard that it was said to the people long ago, but I tell you, right? You've heard that there was this surface level understanding of the commandments, but I don't want you thinking you've kept any of them. So I want to take you deeper so that you can see that in your head, in your heart, in your thoughts, each and every one of you is guilty of all 10. All 10. And it is a loving thing that He would try to show you this, so that you stop trying to get in on your own ticket. Know what I mean by that? So that you would fall on the grace and the mercy of Almighty God and say, "Lo is me, I am a sinner, and I need your grace. I need your grace every day." And so, the fifth commandment. You have heard that it was said to the people long ago, do not murder. But I tell you that anyone who is angry, angry with his brother, angry. I mean, when's the last time you were angry? Have you been angry lately? If you want to talk about it publicly on camera? Angry, angry. I, so Almighty God says to us, "There is a surface level of commandment, but there is a deep level of the commandment, and I need you to know and understand that all of us are guilty of sinning against the Lord our God." So Luther says, right, in the exclamation section of your catechism under the fifth commandment, you want to find your way to it. Luther says, "You shall not murder," or the commandment says, "Thou shalt not murder." And then Luther's explanation of it, are you there? Luther's explanation of it, let's read it together. "We should fear and love God so that we do not hurt nor harm our neighbor in his body, but help and support him in every physical need." There is a pattern in Luther's thought. First of all, there is a, "We should fear and love God," so that, this is the way it shows itself in our relationship, right? First of all, fear and love God, and that defines and inspires the way we relate to one another, right? And then when it comes to the neighbor, when it comes to whoever it is that God brings across the path of your life, when it comes to that, He gives you a formula that begins with, "Don't do this, but instead, do this." And I would say to you, I would say to you that one of the things that Satan's been really, really good at in the church, among the church folks in the world in this day, is that He did it by electric garage door openers and fences. What do I mean by that? We don't interact with our neighbor the way we used to, even over the fence, or whatever that was. I, I, and so this idea of isolating, "I go in, I stay in, I come out. We might say hi, but don't you dare let your dog poop on my lawn without picking it up in a little bag." That is one of the weirdest things I've ever seen in my life. And it happens all over the country. So, sorry. The idea of, "Don't do this, but do this." Do this. I would call that neighboring. Neighboring. Remember when we used to think about being a good neighbor? And I would just challenge you, who can you be a really, really good neighbor to in this new week before you? One of the things that happens in the church is that we get into our little cliques of people, and that's who we neighbor. That's who we neighbor. No matter how small your clique is, that's who we neighbor. And we've lost the ability and the art to have an open, expanding circle of people that we're neighboring. And what do I mean by neighboring? Just being in a relationship with them, loving them, meeting need in their life. I remember when I first graduated from the seminary, I was in rural Iowa, my first call out of the seminary. And there was a, there was an older farmer in the congregation that was going through chemotherapy at harvest and could not get out. Sons were gone. Two sons and a daughter could not get out to get the harvest in. And all of the neighboring farmers, all of the neighboring farmers put down their own harvest for a time and came over and got all of his crop out so that he would not be devastated by what he was going through. Amazing. What is, what, what is the city version of that? You, you don't have harvest. What, have, have you ever? When you look backwards, was, was there ever really grand examples of the way that you neibbered? Yeah? Yeah. And it's kind of around the block, right? Around the block, if there was ever a need. The story is about rebuilding a garage, and all the neighbors came, came to help the rebuilding of the garage. I wonder if it met code, but it's okay, it's okay. See, I'm learning to live in Illinois. So, what else? What else comes to my neighboring? Yes, please. Oh, God. Yes. Yeah. Yeah, like, like Sunday after Sunday here for a while until I stopped putting my keys in my pocket, there were people who would love their pasture by going and closing my trunk because in my pocket I'd push the button from something, and the trunk would pop up. And so they would lovingly shut my trunk for me, right? And so as neighbors, it doesn't have to be great big grand things. It could be things like looking out after their stuff. And if you see something out of line and you know that they are... First of all, that assumes relationship, right? That you know where they are, what they're doing, and you know that for sure, so that then out of that loving relationship, you can, you can boldly take that action. And, and, and so this idea of neighboring begins at the point of relationship, at the point of relationship. And so, the people of God, the people of God at Trinity have got to stop just being with one another and make new friendships. Wherever you are, all along your way, make new friendship. And so, it is, on the, on the, "Don't do this, but instead, do this." When it, on the side of the commandment Luther says where it's, "Don't hurt your neighbor in his body." He says, "We should fear and love God so that we do not, we do not hurt nor harm our neighbor in his body." When you talk about this side of it, "Don't do this," there is the actual surface level, "Do not murder." Do not murder. And, and so we as a nation, we as a world in this day, we need to repent of that murder goes on while we are silent, wherever that is. And one of the things that happens in this commandment is that you see Luther still today, and you see it applied still today, that who alone can take life, Almighty God Himself. And then, and then there is this, this thought about the government in which we live. The government in which we live has the right to fight, quote, "Just wars, and if it chooses, to execute criminals." Right? So, Romans 13, remember, we looked at that? And, and "If you do wrong, be afraid, be very afraid, because he does not bear the sword for nothing." He is God's agent to bring punishment on the wrongdoer. And that is for your good, so that you can live together in harmony. So, there is this idea, there is this idea of an opportunity for us to understand this. I was, I was at Zion Lutheran Church in Dallas, Texas, and I was counseling a young lady that, that had had an abortion. And I'm trying to, I'm trying to introduce her to the, the God of forgiveness and new start. I'm trying to get her out of the guilt and the shame and the horror of what she was feeling connected to what she did. And, and we, she couldn't, she did not want to meet with me in my office. She was a graduate of the school there and was just horrified by the idea that someone would see her and connect the dots. And so we would meet at a Starbucks and visit. And I'm not sure that was any more private, but it was the thing that they were doing. And, and so we did that. One day, one day she said to me, "I left my car at the church parking lot." And so we rode together back to the church, and we got in the school pickup line at the end of the school day. Yeah, right. There's some violence happens in those lines. But I, I, we pulled up behind this car, and on one bumper sticker on one side of it, it said, it said, "Lutheran schools share Christ." Remember that bumper sticker? Lutheran schools share Christ, right? On the other side, it said, "Abortion kills children." I lost her. I lost her. I lost her. So in this commandment, you realize that it is true, it is true that murder is a sin, and murder can happen from the moment of conception all the way to the end of a person's life. And at the very beginning of a life and at the very end of the life, we as a world, a culture, we have a tendency to devalue, to devalue for the sake of our comfort and for the sake of our own power, authority, and control over our lives, make decisions over both the not born yet and the elderly. And we, and both are children of God in the eyes of Almighty God. And so, one of the things that happens when you always get to this place in this commandment is that you have to pause and just sit at the feet of Jesus and, and and understand His heart. David said in Psalm 139, "I was sinful from the day my mother conceived me. You know me how I made, you love me. Before one of the days ordained for me, you, you have known me from the very creation of the world. And I am wonderfully made, and you know that full well." And, and the idea then of, of coming together, one of the things that we as children of God do in response to this command is that we give ourselves to defend the rights of the unborn, who are children of God in the eyes of a loving God. And we also minister to broken mamas and broken daddies in the midst of the mess that all of this brings to them. And again, again, last commandment we said, "Those in authority over us, we honor them." And when we disagree, when they ask us to do something that against the word of God and the will of God, we do that within the system to protest, and we, and we do that with dignity and respect for those who don't think like we do. Jenny, would you like to say anything? Not that I want to put you on the spot or anything. Trinity has a, has, has an amazing Luther's for Life group here with us. And Jenny is one of the leaders of that, and we rejoice in that role that you play. We give thanks to God, not just that you play it, but the way you play it, that it's... that it's, her motivation is out of the love of God for, not just for the rights of the unborn, loving them deeply, but also loving, loving moms and dads and families and, and who would get so far off that this is what would happen. Let me stop here and ask you a question. What sends a person to hell? So it's not sin that sends a person to hell, right? It is unbelief, right? It is unbelief. And so in the midst of being sinful, in the midst of everything that we face, in the midst of all of that challenge, we always need to remember and come back to this truth. It's not sin that sends a person to hell. It is unbelief, unbelief in our Lord and Savior, Jesus Christ, who is the way and the truth and the life for sinners. Yay, when I was sinful, my, 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 my Lord and my Savior died for me, an enemy of God. Let me ask you, let me ask you another question. When you, when you think about this commandment and you think about what He calls you to do and what He calls you not to do, we've talked about actual murder, we've talked about anger and hatred, we've talked about, we've talked about actual murder of both, I need to return to this, both the rights of the unborn and the rights of the elderly. Elderly in, in the, in the culture of Jesus, in the culture of the covenant people of God, from Old Testament through New Testament, from Genesis to Revelation. When the culture was right, when it came to the elder, elderly, how were they looked at? They were honored, they were listened to? There were no screams? And so the, the journey of the patriarch with the family was to tell the family stories and to hand on the faith from one generation to another. And, and, and the joy of the, of the, of the younger sitting at the feet of the elders was at the heart of life together when it was right, when it was right. Now, I'm not Satan, but if I was, I would do everything that I could to silence that generation from one generation to another. So that, I may not be able to do anything to keep you from getting to heaven, but you ain't taking anybody else with you. And so this idea of, of honoring, he turns, Satan turns that on its head, and instead he gets the culture and the country and the, and the worldview to think that if you're not producing this way, this, the way that the culture says, that's production and that's value. Therefore, in this new season, you are less valuable. And the seed planting of that opens the door for devaluing, devaluing the elderly. And those are seed beds in which Satan uses them to, to begin to do the things that are necessary in order to silence an older generation from influencing and telling the stories to another generation. Thoughts? Worst, we call this in the catechism, I don't hear it talked about that much. At its worst, in the catechism, we call that euthanasia. If it's left to its course, then there is, look, the, the, the world is overpopulated, the world has too many people on it. We cannot sustain the population the way that it is. Who can we get rid of? And the evil of a generation in the back rooms of a culture and a world, look at elderly. Not so that you're, not so the word of God, not so the culture that is godly. Instead, it is just the opposite. It is the elderly that need to influence. I was, I was in Dallas, Texas, and part of the reason I was there was because they wanted somebody to lead in a congregation that has, had, had a particular brand of dysfunction. And the dysfunction was this. There was staff dysfunction, but then there was also this dysfunction. This is North Dallas, right? Remember, remember the show Dallas? It was shot like 20 minutes from the church, right? North Dallas, right? Old oil money, right? Old oil money. They, they began, they began to retire from serving on the church council and the elders. And then they joined and developed the senior ministry. And then the senior ministry, in the seniors ministry, they began to consider that now who's going to take leadership responsibility in the church? At that time, I don't even think we use this term anymore. At that time, it was all this dot com entrepreneurial leadership of a new generation that were open to innovation and didn't like tradition. And so in that environment, the people in the seniors group would sit there and complain about the way the younger generation was leading the church. And the, the younger generation would sit there, and they never gave the elderly folks a hearing in anything that they did because they were seen as that generation's over. And into that environment, they called me, they called me to be the pastor and to, and to lead them out of that dysfunction. And God blessed it greatly, but, but you begin to see, you begin to see one generation, when it's right, when it's right, from one generation to another, you hand on the faith and the stories of the faith and the concepts of the faith from one generation to another. And every generation of the church receives from the generation that came before it, a rich heritage to be faithful to. And then every generation adds to that the living heritage of where we are today and gets ready for the next generation that comes along, handing it off stronger than when we found it. That's the idea, that's the idea. And the only time it really becomes sick is when one generation stops talking to the next generation, and the next generation stops talking to the generation before. Does that make sense to you all? And when it's left to run its course all the way to the end, you begin to see sin against the fifth commandment take place in the way that we treat one another. Even if we aren't literally killing one another, the anger and the resentment and pushing aside and not giving a hearing and, and, and the saying to one another, "My way or the highway", is, is something that Satan uses as an instrument to bring division in the family of God or in your family, frankly, in your family. Anything else hit you about the fifth commandment? Yes? So, so you just said, "I need dialysis", right? And then you said, "But I don't want dialysis." Go ahead. So in the catechism that I have here, the new one, for me, it's on page 89. It says, "But I trust you, O Lord, I say, you are my God, my times are in your hand." Having been, I know Tom's been in this situation as well, Bob probably has too. And I know Doug has, I know many pastors are in this situation. You, you are at, you are involved in people's lives, and there are people making choices about treatments and decisions. And if someone says to me, "Look, I want to put myself into the hands of the Lord, and my days are in His hands, and if He wants me here, I am going to be here, but I don't choose to do that thing with my life", it's, it's absolutely fine if it's just one-on-one between you and the Lord. If you're not, if you're actually just putting yourself in his, in His hands and letting Him go. But it never happens, hardly ever happens, just one-on-one between you and the Lord. This lady, that's her daddy, right? And so there is this angst and this anxiety and this struggle and this pain around, around trying to figure out, how do I honor my Father in this season of my life? When honoring Him may mean having Him do something He doesn't want to do? Or how do I honor my Father and do what He wants me to do when I believe that what's going to happen as a result of that is going to result in his death? Right? What'd you do? You respected his wishes. And if you don't mind me asking, what happened? He passed away about three years later? Three days later. So he was, he was close. Anybody who says to you, I was, I was in a situation, oh, God. I was in a situation where the student, or the, the class presidents and the executive body of the student of the, of seminary in St. Louis would take two weeks and trade with the executive student body of, of the other seminary. And then we would take classes, the same classes over there at Fort Wayne, and they would take classes over at St. Louis. And, and then in that environment, there would be reports that would be given about how one seminary was teaching that class versus the other seminary was teaching that class. And, and when I went to, when I went to the other seminary, one of the things that I experienced was that we had just come to this place where the professor at, at St. Louis had come to this set of events and said, "This is how we think about it theologically. This is the grounding and the founding in which you become operational to be able to walk with people one-on-one to a decision-making process." They were trying to create theological thinkers with grounding and foundation principle, right? So I went to the other group, and I sat there, and the professor was saying, "Now, if they say this, then you say this. If they say this, then you say this." And he was trying to create a long list, laundry list of, "If this is what happens, then this is the answer to the question. And take the cheat sheet with you into every situation, and we'll, we'll get you through whatever life throws at you." Right? So it is beautiful, gut-wrenchingly beautiful that you have this example of you and your dad, right? At end-of-life issues, you come to this place where after, after the journey that you've been on, this is how you react to it. Yet this person over here, with their dad, Dan, with their dad, is, is making decisions to do just the opposite of what you did. That is beautiful, it's messiness. So as you think about it, pray about it, then you may come up with different decisions on these things. Just remember that God loves you. And if what is happening is that you are putting your life in His hands, that's one thing. But if you are saying, "I give up, and I don't want to fight", when there is opportunity for more life to be lived in victory, then that's also something that you need to wrestle with as well. Yes? That's a wonderful thing. So when you, when you come to this, here are the foundation principles upon which to think and pray and enter the mess. You ever get there, or you've ever been there? Okay? God is the author of life. God is the author of life, number one. God is victor over death, number two. God is victor over death. In Christ, my life and my death are in His hand. And He alone knows, right? So when it comes to these end-of-life issues and the challenges that come from navigating that, you want to ask yourself the question, "Am I, am I, oh, my mom, my dad, your mom, your dad? When you are in this situation, where are they in this process? Where are they? Are they still able to make these decisions for themselves, whether I like them or not?" If the answer to that question is yes, then, then you can pray with them, have conversation with them, argue with them, fight with them out of love for them, and you can influence them for the sake of stewarding their life all the way to the end. If you are in a position where they no longer have that mental capacity to do that because of what life and chemo and other kinds of things have done to them, then your stewarding of their life, as you pray about it and you think about it and you get good counsel around it, you want to ask yourself the question, "Is the next step going to prolong life? Or is the next step just going to keep them beating? So that if I didn't take this step, I would literally be putting them in the hands of the Lord? And if He chooses to take them home, then it's His choice. But if He chooses to give them revival and restoration, then He will get that done. He can deliver however it is He chooses. He doesn't have to use doctors to get that done." He can deliver however it is he chooses. He doesn't have to use doctors to get that done. Other questions, other concerns or comments? Yes? So, a DNR is actually a step toward putting yourself into the hands of the Lord. At some particular point, it's saying, I, I don't want this set of things to be done so that my loved one can be in the hands of the Lord. Right? He knows that you were going to do the DNR. Great. Awesome. You have one? Okay. What in the world? I, I don't want to take the class off. You and I need to talk about that one-on-one afterward. Okay? Okay. So when you, when you dive into the mess of ministry to people at both ends of this spectrum, and then also throughout our lives, there is all of this, notice all of the things that come to mind up out of just like the, the four words. Thou shalt not murder. That was four. I shall not murder. And, and Almighty God says to us, look, you're going to fail. You're going to fall. You're going to stumble. And in your relationships, both with people that you love and people that you hate and people that you don't care about and people that you don't even know, you're going to fail and you're going to fall and you're going to need my grace. You're going to need my grace. And you're going to need, you're going to, you're going to need, then on the other side of that grace, as he guides your life, to find a way to defend your neighbor. And to be neighborly and to be loving. And to enter into the mess of another person's life. Commandment number six. You ready for commandment number six? I don't think you are. Commandment number six. Thou shalt not commit adultery. You've heard that it was said to the people long ago, do not commit adultery, but I tell you that anyone who has looked at a woman lustfully has committed adultery with her in his heart. And I don't think it's too much of a stretch to switch that around. Right? And say, you've heard that it was said to the people long ago, do not commit adultery, but I tell you that any woman who has looked at a man lustfully has already committed adultery with him in her heart. Right? You, you'd give me that one, wouldn't you? And, and so you ladies can't get off that hook that easy. So, if I was Satan, now I'm not, but if I was, I would do everything that I could. I would do everything that I could to rip apart this commandment. Everything from redefining marriage in the culture and around the world to the point where anybody can get married today. Redefining sexuality. The word of God says to us, male and female, I created them. In my image, I created them. Male and female, I've created them. There's no question. But what happens is that Satan does everything that he can to rip apart both marriage in the, as it, as it is given in the eyes of God, to rip apart definitions of family in the word of God and the role, the central role of family as the very bedrock, marriage and family as the very bedrock of relationships in the culture. And then, and then to take it even further, Satan would love to have the culture in the country redefine and lose sight of what it means to be male or female. And as a result of that, as a result of that, or in the midst of that, we find ourselves at least in, in part of this conversation where we are. But here the word of the Lord that says to us, in the beginning, he made them male and female. In the image of God, he created them, male and female. And he says, therefore, a man will leave his father and mother, be united to his wife, and those two will become one flesh. The word of God stands in the church. The word of God is under attack in the culture. And so there is this, there is this challenge for us. So when you look at, when you then look at stories in the Bible, you see this commandment coming to play and you see, and then we'll, and then we'll stop. I, I think of David and Bathsheba. Right? David and Bathsheba. So when we get back together again next week, I would love for you to have read the story of David and Bathsheba. And try to find, try to find, there are a sequence of events. There are a sequence of events in David's life where he either wasn't where he was supposed to be. And that led him to be exposed to the temptation that he fell to. And to just see the sequence of events as one sin requires another sin, requires another sin to the point where, to the point where murder and the prophet of God has to come to David and say, you're the man. You did it. And then David repents of the sin before God. So let's pray. Next week, we'll get together and we'll start there in that place. And I'm sure that'll only take us a couple of minutes. Father, I, I thank you for brothers and sisters in Christ who love you. As we sit at your feet in your word, be with us, dear Jesus. Send to us your spirit to counsel, comfort, guide and enlighten us. Strengthen us for the journey before us. In the, in, in the meat of the day, in the, in the, in the moment by moment, things of the day, give us wisdom for the facing of the challenges of these days. Teach us how to think according to your will. And out of your love and out of this framework that you're trying to give us. In your name we pray. Amen.